Good evening, thank you so much for coming out tonight. My name is Saba Bareta and I'm the Vice Chair of the DC Public Charter School Board. My colleague Darren Woodruff is here as well, and we have Rick Cruz, Steve Bumbach, and Naomi Shelton joining us by phone, other members of the Board. Don Soifer and Ricardo Ganjam are not able to join us tonight, but they will watch a video of the hearing. On March 12, 2018, the DC Public Charter School Board voted to initiate revocation process for the charter of Washington Math Science Technology Public Charter School, which from now on I'll call WMST. Tonight, we're holding this public hearing at the request of the school to provide the school and its stakeholders the opportunity to voice their opinions about the grounds for the proposed revocation. We are not voting on revocation tonight. I'm going to say that twice. We are not voting on revocation. There is no vote tonight. The only point is for us to hear from the school and its stakeholders, and for us to ask questions. We have scheduled a meeting for the morning of April 9th for the Board to hold a final vote. However, if my colleagues and I decide based on what we hear tonight that we need more time to collect information or consider the school's presentation, we will postpone that meeting and postpone the vote. Our court reporter is here to document this hearing. It's also being streamed live, and a recording will be available on the DC PCSB website. To ensure that we make the most of our time this evening, we have allotted no more than 30 minutes for the staff from DC PCSB to present the proposal of revocation to the Board. This will be followed by 30 minutes for the school and its representatives to make a presentation and respond to the staff's presentation if they choose. There then will be 30 minutes for the school to answer any questions that the Board members themselves may have. We will conclude the hearing with public testimony for 60 minutes. Because of the time, we will only be able to hear testimony from witnesses who signed up, and I have the list here, and each person will have approximately two minutes to speak. I ask, just in respect for your other speakers, that you really do try to stop at two minutes. There'll be a buzzer. It's just not fair for other people to take up more time when we have so many people who'd like to express their opinion. Now, we're going to first hear from Scott Pearson, Executive Director of the Public Charter School Board. But before I let Scott go, can I see if there's any public officials in the room tonight? And if you'll introduce yourself? Okay.
Thank you, Saba. After receiving a series of troubling financial updates from the school in February, the Public Charter School Board hired accountants from the forensic accounting firm of the Stone Turn Group to independently review the school's finances. And that firm has been working cooperatively with the school since February 26th, reviewing the school's financial condition in detail and tracking it on a daily basis. And we'd like to thank the school for its cooperation in working with Stone Turn. Stone Turn's initial assessment showed that the school was out of cash. The school was forecast to be unable to meet its March 23rd payroll, and was forecast to require over $800,000 of cash to complete the school year, and the school had no immediate source of funds. Based on this assessment, the PCSB Board met on March 12th and voted to initiate revocation proceedings of the school's charter on the grounds that the school is no longer economically viable. The School Reform Act requires the Public Charter School Board to revoke a school's charter in this case. I should note that the school receives the same generous per pupil funding as every other charter school in DC, funding that is among the highest in the nation. And the school actually has relatively low occupancy costs compared to other charter schools, which is one of the biggest financial challenges many of our schools face. If this school had managed its finances well, and the school's Board and leadership had exercised appropriate oversight, we would not be sitting here tonight. That said, the school's Board has worked diligently over the past several weeks to try to resolve the school's financial predicament, and we acknowledge and appreciate their efforts. Specifically, the school has secured $97,000 of short-term debt, as well as some donations, which enabled them to cover the March 23rd payroll and has helped the school to get through this year's cash crunch. The Board secured an agreement from the school staff to defer their payroll on April 6th until after they receive fourth quarter payments from the district next week. The school signed a purchase agreement to sell this building for six and a quarter million dollars, with the closing scheduled in July. The Board negotiated an agreement under which the school can occupy this building rent-free next school year. And they reached an agreement with the holder of the mortgage and the holder of their line of credit to defer repayment of the principal until the building sale is complete. The Board entered into a relationship with Building Hope to provide competent back-office financial management services. And the school developed forecasted financials, which they claim show that the school can get through the next school year under enrollment scenarios of 200 students and 180 students, which were scenarios that we provided the school. So they've done a lot. But as of tonight, we are still not able to say that the school has regained its economic viability. There are two key issues that remain. First, the school needs to find at least $500,000 of additional financing to get through this school year. The school is in discussions with lenders, but it has not yet received this loan. And second, we have not yet been able to analyze the school's forecasted financials for next year, which we received just minutes ago. Among the things that we need to determine are, first, does the school have the staffing in order to offer all of the required high school and international baccalaureate classes? Does the school have the staffing and the resources to provide required services to students with disabilities? And is the budget realistic, incorporating all of the anticipated expenses, with reserves for unforeseen events, and that provides for what we know is the relocation of the school's facility at the end of the next school year? Without a realistic budget, we will be in the exact same position we're in now, a year from today, with the school effectively out of cash in April or May. The Board, as Ms. Bareta mentioned, the Board is currently scheduled to vote on this matter on Monday. Staff recommends that you move your vote to occur later in the week, on or around Thursday, April 12th. This will provide the staff time to analyze the school's financials, and it will allow the WMST Board more time to finalize their loan. If these two issues are successfully resolved, we look forward to sharing with you our conclusion that the school has managed to regain its economic viability, and our recommendation that the Board vote not to revoke the charter. Our recommendation will almost certainly stress the ongoing risk to the school. Inevitably, its budget will be extremely tight, with any deviation from the tightest financial management, any further enrollment shortfalls, or any large unexpected expenses could expose the school to insolvency. And we would also expect to recommend that the Board find that the school has committed two separate instances of fiscal mismanagement. The first relates to last school year, when the Board, when the school received a going concern notice from their auditors, indicating that the auditors were concerned that the school could run out of money. And the second relates to the mismanagement that occurred this school year, when the school had enrollment that was more than 60 students below its forecast and did not appropriately cut its expenses to match the lower enrollment. On the other hand, if the two items I described are not resolved, that is, if the school does not secure a $500,000 loan or gift, or if PCSB staff concludes that the financial forecasts are unrealistic or unviable, then we will have no choice but to recommend that the Board vote to revoke the school's charter. In this case, PCSB will step in to ensure an orderly closure of the school, including covering expenses out of our own budget necessary to keep the school open through the end of the year, and working intensively, one-on-one, with the school's students and families to provide an appropriate placement for next year. As I mentioned, we hired a forensic accounting firm to independently assess the school's finances. Stone Turn has thoroughly analyzed the school's documents and forecasts, and I'd now like to invite Kristin Bone from Stone Turn to testify as to their assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. My name is Kristin Bone. I am a partner with Stone Turn, a forensic accounting services firm. We were engaged by the DC Public Charter School Board to perform various financial analyses of the Washington Math Science Technology Charter School, particularly focusing on cash flow. The Stone Turn team worked with the head of school, Dr. Diagne, and the school's business manager, Mark Adai, to create an analysis of the school's current financial position through the end of the current school year. I thank them, as well as the school's Board of Directors, for their assistance in our work. We have received full cooperation and access to all records that we have requested. We were provided with the following information: the school's books and records, which is the general ledger, bank statements, bills, amounts due to suppliers and employees, and various other financial information, including supply contracts, budgets for the current and next school years, the school's borrowing and debt agreements, including the loan agreement with the District of Columbia for the borrowing of over $8 million in bond proceeds, a commercial security agreement for a $300,000 line of credit with United Bank, and information regarding the $97,000 in unsecured personal loans. In addition, we received the last two years' independent audit reports, and the school's own financial forecast for the next school year. Our analysis of the cash position has been updated on a daily basis to include the latest receipts, including the per pupil funding, grants and donations, payments, and updated estimates of financial commitments. We have provided the school and the Board a daily update of the analysis for their review and comment on the accuracy of the numbers, and we will continue to do so until otherwise told to. Based on our review of the documents and analysis of the financials, we have the following observations, and if you could go to the first slide, please. So, the June 30th, 2017 audit was performed by McConnell &amp; Jones, LLP, dated in October 26th, 2017. It contained a going concern disclosure. This is an important disclosure, as it means that the auditors, looking at the current, the school's current financial position through June 30th, 2018, had substantial doubt about the school's ability to remain in operation. In this case, the main issue stemmed from the school's deficit of $791,000 at the end of the fiscal year 17, school year. At that date, there was only sufficient cash on hand to meet two days' worth of bills. DC PCSB's target metric for days' cash for charter schools is 45 days. Next slide, please. The auditor has also issued a finding of a significant deficiency in the school's internal controls over their financial reporting, resulting from an understatement of expenses in their financials by approximately $372,000. In other words, the school's controls needed some improvement. Next slide, please. According to the audit report, management and the Board of Directors created a plan to address the operating loss and liquidity risk, meaning running out of cash. There were four steps, as you can see on the slide. The first was to reduce the number of staff members. It's our understanding that the school did reduce their staff levels, and the school's forecast for the next year continues to contain cuts, additional staff cuts, but I'll go into those details later. Number two, recruiting new students to enroll in WMST, so as to increase their per pupil financial support from the district. As per the audited enrollment numbers, the school has been experiencing a decline in enrollment over the last few years, and I would note that the school enrolled 228 students for this current year compared to the forecasted 284. Currently, 209 still remain. Moreover, the school did not reduce expenses to align with this lower enrollment, as evidenced by the fact that at least as early as January 31st, the school was already over budget for year-to-date expenses by approximately $175,000. In our discussions with Dr. Diagne and the school's Board of Directors, the school's been making efforts to recruit new students for the next year, and we've been told that there's a donor who has offered to spend his or her money, own funds of $30,000, for consultants specifically to assist the school in recruitment. Next slide, please. The school's... The third item on that list was to sell the school's facility. So we have been provided with a fully executed real estate purchase agreement. The terms of the purchase agreement are that the buyer, Douglas Development, will purchase the property and the facility for $6.25 million. That amount will be reduced by $210,000 of broker's fees and $30,000 of attorney's fees for a net of $6.01 million. We do not know yet the amount of other costs that the sale, that may be incurred of the sale, such as title fees. But the sale will occur in July 2018. And note that the outstanding balance of the loan secured by the property is also $6.01 million. Therefore, the sale will not provide any additional operating cash for the school. The sale of the building is tied to a lease-back agreement, for which the school pays no rent for 12 months, and will be responsible for tenant insurance and all repairs and maintenance of the facilities. The 12 months of no rents negotiated as a reduction in the sales price, as there was a previous offer by the same buyer to purchase the facilities for $6.95 million, however, plus monthly rent of $60,000. The last item on the management plan was to select a new school's facility, which features things such as a gymnasium, which the current facility does not have. In late February, the school had hoped to move to a new facility in the middle of the next school year. We were provided a copy of the letter of intent that the school planned to sign for a lease on a new facility. However, based on the cash projections at the time, we did not see an ability for the school to be able to cover the upfront expenses that accompanied the new lease, including six months' deposit for approximately $500,000, the moving expenses, and construction costs related to getting the new facility ready. Therefore, the plan for their new location for the 2018-2019 school year was abandoned. Now, I'll speak to the school's most current financial status. As of the end of yesterday, April 4th, so close of day, the school had total available cash, which is the cash in the bank less any outstanding checks, of $63,000. The school has approximately $185,000 in accounts payable. That is, $185,000 in current bills due within the next 30 days for expenses already incurred, several of which of these bills are past due. The school has payroll due tomorrow, as Mr. Pearson had mentioned. It is due tomorrow, Friday, April 6th, and the school does not have enough sufficient funds to cover that payroll. However, we understand that the school's staff has agreed to defer payment of their payroll until the next quarterly per pupil funding, which is April 13th, is paid. And I believe the school will present a plan on that later this evening. The school has the following outstanding debts. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So as previously mentioned, the school has approximately $6.01 million payable for debt on the property, and that will be paid off in July with the sale of the building. The school also has a line of credit for $300,000, which is secured by the school's assets, which is due in June 2018, but the school has indicated that the lender, United Bank, has agreed to have it paid off at the time of the sale of the property in July, though it is not clear that there will be funds to be able to do so from the sale. There's also the unsecured loans of totaling $97,000 from three private individuals, which have been made for the school to make their March 23rd payroll, and in which the school's Board has indicated will be paid back with interest, minor interest, about $300, after the receipt of the April per pupil funding. The total of the outstanding debts is roughly $6.4 million. As previously mentioned, the sale of the building will net $6.01 million, which covers the debt on the property only, leaving $400,000 in debt to be paid from other sources, like from per pupil payments. Note that this $400,000 does not include the $500,000 of further borrowing the school would need to get through the end of the year. Thus, the school would need to draw about $900,000 from next year's revenues to pay off its loans. Next slide, please. Our analysis is an estimated projection based on the year-to-date spending, as well as anticipated reductions in remaining expenses identified by school's management. The results of the analysis shows that the school will have a cash deficit of roughly $356,000 at June 30th, 2018. This amount does not reflect the outstanding debt of the $6.4 million. Note that there's another payroll payment due July 13th, shortly thereafter, and prior to the July per pupil funding. Therefore, the school will need approximately $500,000 in additional funds to make it to the July per pupil payment without going negative. With the help of Building Hope, an organization which provides services to charter schools, the school has created its own financial forecast through the end of the year, and you will find with the school's presentation later this evening that both Building Hope's forecast and our forecast are, for year-end cash position, are very close in numbers. The school has created a forecast for the next school year with Building Hope's assistance. We received a copy of it just prior to this hearing and have not had time to fully analyze in detail this forecast. However, based on a very preliminary look, we have noted the following assumptions and contingencies upon which the forecast is based. Namely, the major source of revenue for the school, which is the per pupil funding, is based on a projected enrollment of 211 students. At this level of enrollment, the school maintains positive cash flow. We have been told by Building Hope that they break-even scenario, which means no negative or positive cash flow is projected at 200. Should the enrollment numbers drop below 200, then the school would not have positive cash unless they undertook even further cuts beyond what is currently in their plan. I will caveat this by saying that we were provided with three different scenarios this evening, and again, have not had opportunity to take a look at those other scenarios, and those are based on different enrollment numbers. The forecast has a staff reduction of about 18% or nine staff members, including teachers, consultants, and other staff. The staffing cuts assume no corresponding reduction in projected student enrollment, meaning the ratio of staff to students will decline. The forecast assumes a 24% reduction for total operating expenses, equal to a cut of approximately $1.3 million over this year's expenses. This reduction includes a 19% reduction in salaries expense, including consultants, and 52% in benefits expense, which is not entirely correlated with the reduction in staff. The forecast shows next year's ending cash balance to be $157,000, that means at July, June 30th, 2019. The school's forecast for next year does not appear to have any allowance for any unforeseen events. Additionally, the forecast does not include estimated upfront costs, as far as we can see from our preliminary look, related to procuring and moving to a new facility for the school year 2019 to 2020. For example, a required security deposit or down payment, moving costs, or leasehold capital improvements could amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars. In summary, if projected enrollment numbers and targeted expense reductions are not realized, and new sources of funds are not identified to cover unforeseen expenses and costs related to a new facility, then the school may not be able to maintain a positive cash balance as the school's financial forecast estimates. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I don't have any questions for her right now. No, thank you.
Anyone on the phone have questions for Scott or Kristin?
No, I don't have any questions.
So at this time, thank you very much, both Scott and Kristin. At this time, we're going to hear from WMST's staff and representatives.
Good evening, members of the Public Charter School Board. My name is Dr. Danine Long White. I am the President of the Board of Trustees for Washington Mathematical Science Technology, WMST Public Charter High School. I am joined today at the table with Dr. Diagne, who is the Head of Schools, Dr. Jerry Bowling, who is the Board of Trustees Treasurer, Lance Hemling, representative from Building Hope, and Stephen Marcus, our attorneys in this matters. In addition, there are other board members who are in the audience. WMST is one of the oldest public charter schools in Washington, DC. We have been in existence for 20 years and have graduated over 1,200 students, who have gone on to college and other successful careers. The events that have brought us here today have forced WMST to examine more closely how we do business and the need to change that paradigm. As such, I would like to speak today about what WMST has accomplished since the March 5th emergency charter board meeting, and our plans on changing the old paradigm. First, I would like to just briefly state how we got to this point. When WMST developed our budget for this year, we were overly optimistic about our enrollment numbers and based the budget on those numbers. When we realized that we were not going to make those numbers, we did make cuts in the budget, but these cuts were not enough. However, we felt that with the sale of our building, we would be able to make up the deficit. Unfortunately, as much as we tried, we were not successful in selling the building prior to the March emergency meeting. Since the March emergency charter board meeting, our goals were to accomplish four things. One, sell our building. Two, have a budget for the remainder of this school year that demonstrated solvency. Three, have a budget for the next school year that demonstrated solvency for the entire year. And four, develop a recruitment plan to support WMST's proposed budget for next year. To the first goal, we have entered into a sales contract to sell the building, which includes a generous lease-back agreement of one year of free rent. The contract was signed over a week ago, and funds have been deposited into an escrow account. Closing will occur in 90 days, so about the end of June, first part of July. In addition, to assist WMST in meeting our goal of solvency for this year, our real estate brokers have reduced their original commission to 3%, providing us with some savings. To the second and third goal, we reached out to Building Hope to ask for assistance in developing a budget for this year, which would demonstrate solvency for the year, as well as next school year. Our original budget was based on 211 students, and then late yesterday afternoon, we were asked to change our projections to 20180, and we have been able to provide all three of those projections here tonight. Lance Hemling from Building Hope will speak more to the budget. In every scenario, WMST needed to identify new funds this year to address the estimated $500,000 deficit, which will kick in around mid-May. To address this deficit, WMST approached several banks and other potential lenders. We thought that we had a lender lined up to provide the loan, but at the 11th hour yesterday evening, we were informed that they would not be able to help. Rather than sit back and accept defeat, WMST reached out to several businesses to inquire about emergency assistance. One organization connected us to a developer, who has been working with WMST since late last night to connect us to a lender. I am happy to say that we do have a potential lender, and we just received a letter from the developer and the lender, Industrial Bank, to provide us potentially with a $500,000 loan. Industrial Bank has asked Industrial Bank is asking for some time to do their due diligence so that we can structure the deal. And we are asking the charter board to give WMST 14 days to finalize the deal with the lender. The letter specifically says, "Letter of intent to underwrite loan to Washington Math Science Technology. Dear Mr. Pearson, this letter serves as confirmation that real estate developers Red Dove Partners and Greg Cordona Partners are working closely with Milton Franklin, Vice President of Commercial Lending at Industrial Bank, to expedite the underwriting of a loan of $500,000 to Washington Math Science Technology Science High School, located at 1920 Bladensburg Road, Northeast Washington, D.C. We anticipate that the due diligence and underwriting process will take between seven to 10 business days after completing the due diligence and underwriting process. The loan will be contingent upon the following factors: The D.C. Public Charter School Board decision not to revoke WMST's charter; Two, confirmation of guaranteed repayment from the D.C. Government Office of the State Superintendent; and Three, final agreement on the loan terms." And the gentleman closes by saying that the charter board can contact him directly should they have any questions, et cetera. "We feel that asking for the 14 days to finalize the deal with the lender is a reasonable request and does not endanger the school from being able to meet its financial obligations as we will receive our per pupil allotment on April 15 and will be solvent at least until mid to late May." Goal four, recruitment plan. Dr. Diagny will provide a more in-depth discussion about recruitment. However, of note is that an anonymous donor has pledged to pay for the services of a consulting firm. This consulting firm, Mitch Rich, has experience with working with charter schools to recruit students and develop partnerships with sponsors. The $30,000 that will be used for this is a donation to the school, not a loan. This organization is ready to start helping with recruitment as soon as the charter board recommends that we keep our charter. You might ask what we plan to do different in order that we are not here next year. In this area, we have three key plans. One, work with Building Hope to provide back-office accounting services, very similar to what we've been receiving from Building Hope, as well as from the charter board, for about 30 days now, with daily updates, weekly updates, et cetera, about our cash flow. Two, develop a realistic budget for next year with achievable enrollment numbers. And three, develop an advisory council to the board, consisting of four to five members, to assist the board with fundraising, sponsorship, and enhance opportunities for students. Far too long, we have depended solely on the OCE allotments to run our school. We have to look outside of this source to diversify our funding. The advisory council will help us with that, and they will be made up of representatives from education, finance, and philanthropic organizations. Thus far, we have two individuals who have agreed to be on there. One is Tony Miles Maloney, also known as Justine Love, and a previous principal, Mr. Gilmore. We've reached out to banks as well to serve on there, and I don't want to say, but there is one bank that is going to sit on there, but we want to get their permission to put that out there. Finally, we know that we must begin to identify a new space for WMST. We have two plans of action in this area. One, we have started conversations with Building Hope. If we decide to partner with them on the building acquisition side of their business, they have a few options for WMST, which will take into account the estimated enrollment as well as our financial situation. Such arrangements would be made after this first year of free rent. Second, the developer who connected us to Industrial Bank has also said that he would assist us in finding a building that is affordable and fits our specifications. And namely, those specifications are being located around a feeder school or several feeder schools to help us with enrollment and give us room to grow. In closing, WMST feels that we have a solid plan to move forward. We understand that our plan is contingent on being able to attain the bridge loan of $500,000. We ask that you allow us time to close the deal with the lender, Industrial Bank, in order that we can be solvent through this year and build on what we need to build on for next year. I'll now allow Lance from, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking over here, I'm sorry, Lance Hemling from Building Hope to discuss the numbers specifically.
Hello, my name is Lance Hemling, and I am with Building Hope. So WMST reached out to Building Hope about a month ago, just prior to the initial hearing, to support the school in assembling a set of financial projections. And to date, that's the extent of the work that we've done up through this time. We have not performed any accounting services, nor have we audited any of the information that's been provided by the school. Instead, we have assembled projections using the information provided by the school, including historical data recorded in the school's accounting system, and any assumptions provided by leadership around enrollment, personnel, and benefits. We have acted in a consulting capacity to support the school and board in delivering a set of projections to you here today. Before diving in, I wanted to orient you to the financial information that you received just prior to the start of this meeting. The documents you have include a set of projections developed for the remainder of this school year and the upcoming school year, 2018 and '19. This includes a weekly cash flow projection from April 2 through June 30, 2019, and an income statement for the current year and the next year, 18, '19. The school is focused on its own scenario, as mentioned previously, that reflects student enrollment of 211. In addition, at the request of the charter school board, a set of projections were also developed using the following enrollment scenarios: 200 students and 180 students. That information has also been shared with the board. The projections that are shared with you rely on the loan of $500,000, which Dr. Long has touched on in her remarks. School leadership has been determined, based on the agreement received from its staff, that the upcoming payroll scheduled for tomorrow, April 6, can be deferred until receipt of the final per pupil funding payment in the coming weeks. As you can see from the projections that you have in front of you, this is with the 211 students, with the payroll deferral, upon receipt of the per pupil payment, the school can continue to fund its ongoing operations through the middle of May. This enables a bit more time to finalize the terms and the agreement for the $500,000 At this point, I can walk through some of the key assumptions in the projections according to the model that reflects 211 students. At 211 next year, the school is expected to have cash on hand to meet its ongoing obligations. The plan assumes that the school receives the funding of $500,000 to cover current debt and current obligations. The debt will be paid down over time, with one payment of $250,000 applied in July, and the final payment of $250,000 applied in October, both of which occur in conjunction with the receipt of the per pupil funding payments. In addition, Building Hope has indicated it is willing to provide access to a line of credit, which would be available next year just prior to per pupil funding payments to infuse working capital during some of the periods leading up to those payments where cash typically is low for a school. With regards to the sale of the building, the closing, as reflected in the projections, is expected to occur in July. At the point of the sale, the debt on the building, along with the outstanding line of credit, will also be paid down. With regards to the budget for next year, here are some of the key assumptions that are included in those numbers. Enrollment, so, sorry, continues to be, so enrollment for this year, so the April payment that is coming in the next week or two, is based on the 225 students. And then, for the following year, the budget of 211 students. In a moment, I'll let Dr. Diagny speak to that assumption and provide more information around the 211 students and how the school intends to meet that number. In terms of per pupil funding, next year, there's a budget, in the budget, there's an increase of 3.9% on the current foundation-level amount. That 3.9% is aligned to the mayor's proposed budget and also reflects a 2.2% increase for the facility's allotment over this year. In addition, there are other spending reductions that are needed to bring the school's finances in line with other schools. This includes rightsizing the staff size, reducing the benefits costs, and tightly managing discretionary spending. The school is already in discussion with its broker regarding insurance and has received quotes for less expensive plans and is already working, as you'll see, within the budget to make necessary cuts to bring the school's finances back in line. With that, I'd like to ask if there are any questions before turning it over to Dr. Diagny. Yes?
211 students, 18, '19, school year? So under this proposal, have you guys done any projections on whether or not they would be able to afford the upfront cost for a new building?
So with 211, the cash at the end of June 30 for next year is expected to be $157,000. With regards to the facility itself, finding a new location for that following year, as Dr. Long alluded to, there's been conversations with Building Hope, as well as with the other organization, to determine the best next steps. But I believe with regards to Building Hope, there's options that are potentially available, but I can't speak to specifics on that.
In each of your three scenarios, have you gone through the specific staff who are remaining and confirmed that they, there is sufficient staff to offer all required high school and international baccalaureate classes?
So I'm going to turn this question over to Dr. Diagny, I think, to speak a little bit more about the staffing plan.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Good evening. My name is Dr. Inde Diagny. I'm the Head of School for Washington Math Science Public Charter High School. We make sure I did send a draft for the master schedule for next school year. What we did was we matched the number of staff based on the number of students.
And, thank you. And is that the case for just the 211 scenario or also for the 200 and the 180 scenario?
It's for the 218. Because when you look at the 180, for example, if we budget for 36 ninth graders, we'll have a ratio of maybe 15 or 16 to 1. So we still have room to add most of that in those sections.
And have you gone through the number of forecasted students with disabilities and confirmed that you have sufficient staff to provide the hours of specialized services that each of them is entitled to in their IEP?
Yes, sir, we did. We included even in the draft master schedule that we will have support, that will provide advisory, who's going to be in the resource room, as well as providing inclusions in the classrooms.
So I guess continuing with that train of thought, am I right that the 211 student budget reflects, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow the numbers, a cut of nine staff between now and then?
The 211, if I remember well, it was six positions.
Six positions. So what are those six positions, if they're not instructional?
I will, I'm not going to be able to say on top of my head. I have to look at it again. But yes, it does have teachers and instructional support as well.
Okay.
Because if we go from four section to two section, you definitely don't need more teachers to teach two sections. So, thank you.
Wait, can you repeat that last part? If you go from what to what? Say that again.
For example, if you have, let's say, 80 ninth graders, definitely we need four sections for that. But if you go from 80 to 36 ninth graders, you will not need four sections of English one.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's all the questions for you.
Thank you.
Are you speaking separately?
Oh, you finished. Are you done with the questions?
I have one, so one of the, when we developed the enrollment projections of 180 and 200, they were based on our best assessment of both the percentage of ninth, 10th, and 11th graders who will return to the school next year, as well as an estimate of how many new students will attend the school. So the retention rate of ninth, 10th, and 11th graders at the school is quite consistent. Approximately 70% of ninth, 10th, and 11th graders come back the next year, and that's been the case for several years. So if we look at the total number of ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders you have now, it's 151, and 70% of that would be 106 returning students. And so to get to 211 would require enrolling 105 new students, which is far more than the school enrolled last year, and is actually in excess of the total number of students on the school's waiting list. So it would be helpful to understand why you believe that 211 is an appropriate forecast. And I guess just sort of editorially, it's a concern to me personally that the school is counting on the 211, because it seems like the, what got the school into this trouble in the first place was basing its staffing on optimistic assumptions. It feels to me like you're doing it again.
We believe we will achieve an enrollment of 211, and here are the reasons why. We do have highly motivated staff that are doing everything they can do to help in the area of enrollment. For example, in regard to the teacher effort, they want to increase student enrollment, and each teacher has agreed to actively recruit at least two students. By making phone calls to parents, encouraging their student to talk to their younger sibling about coming to WMST. We do also have teachers who visited community centers, as well as educational facilities within the neighborhood. Just today, we have our SEA, the Student Government Association, that met to put plans together in order to support in the area of recruitment. I believe one of the teachers will be able to share the improved recruitment and fundraising video that they put together this evening with us. In addition to that, we have something that we did not have in the past, which is partnering with Mitch Rich Communications. And I believe Dr. Long mentioned it earlier, that we have a donor who believes in WMST and what we are doing here at WMST that is willing to pay between $25,000 to $30,000. I'm just going to highlight some of the area that this organization is going to help WMST with, is developing communication strategy plan, as well as also getting the stories. We have great accomplishment at WMST. We just need to know how to sell our story to the public. And also, help us with developing relationship. And also, help us with developing relationship with government, the government, partnership and sponsorship developments. This is the reason why. And another thing, Mr. Pearson, when I look at my school DC, for this year, we did see an increase of student, an increased number of students who show interest in WMSC. For example, in 2016, 17, prior to my school matching student with schools, we have 265 students who show interest to WMSC. For this upcoming school year, we have 317 students who did show interest to attend WMSC. And by monitoring sales force, because right now, my school DC did not match any student with WMSC, all our students are put on a waitlist, because we wanted to make sure we are clear with DC Public Charter School Board first. And every day, we monitor the list of the students who are on the waitlist. For example, on April the 2nd, we have 41 ninth graders who were on our waitlist. As of today, we have 54 ninth graders who are listed on our waitlist. On April, and for the 10th grade, it's very consistent. On April the 2nd, we have 26 ninth grade, 10th grader, and these are new students. It doesn't have anything to do with returning students. And as of today, we have 27 10th graders on our waitlist. In regard to the 11th graders, we have 19 students on our waitlist. And for the 12th graders, we have 13 students. That means, as of today, we have 104 students on our waitlist. We did have, we did have one of the staff member, who is the attendance counselor in the main office, who did reach out to these parents, and they were very excited to hear from WMSC. And all of them are willing and are ready to enroll at WMSC as long as we get clear with PCSB. We did also reach out to, I can say, the majority of our returning students. As of today, we have only two parents who say, "My child will not be returning to WMSC."
I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. It's not for my question, right? I think a little context, I mean, a lot of what we talked about so far this evening is based on what's happening right now, both financially and what you hope to happen with enrollment for next school year. So, I, given from what I've heard, I'm fairly confident that you can have a sufficient enrollment to continue to exist as a school. But I think what I'm struggling with is, how do you get beyond just existing? What we want, what we hope to have, and I'm sure you do too, is a thriving, quality school, not just a school that's limping along with a bare minimum of students necessary to pay the bills. So, here's my question. As recently, according to the numbers I have, as recently as two school years ago, your enrollment was over 300 students, is that correct? And now, we're talking about a potential enrollment of about 211 for next year. So, there's literally been, over two school years, a drop of about 100 students, if those numbers are accurate. Do you have an appreciation for what's driven the decrease from year to year in enrollment? And how, how does that trend get reversed? Because I think my concern is, even if we support the school continuing, is it going to, is it going to be at the level that we all would want to see it at? So, can you, can you give us a little more context of the historical decline in students?
Yes, I'm going to name a few. One of the main complaint we hear from students is, "We want to have real-life high school experience," that's one of them. That's why we're trying to do everything we can do to go to a new building. Another one is, we accept students at different, at very old grade level across the board. You don't have to be just a ninth grader to start at WMSC. We, for example, this year, we have about, I believe, 10 or 15 new seniors, as well as juniors. Most of the time, when the students come to us, they have undercredit. They are, they are not in a position where they can graduate. And if you look at the movement, most of the transfer comes between 11 and 12 grade. When they come here as ninth, 10th graders, it does not, they don't realize that, "Hey, I need to graduate in two years." But when they get to the 11th grade, that's when they say, "I want to graduate." And if they do not have enough credit to graduate, they either decide to go to Loximore or go to Phelps in order to graduate. For the last two years, what we've been doing with the staff is to do data analysis and have student focus group, where we talk to students to find out, "How can we better support you?" And that's when we realized that the frustration comes from the fact that they are 18 or 19 years old, and they need, they want to graduate. So, what we do is, we provide night school. Sometimes, it's challenging to put them in night school, because we want to make sure that they pass the daytime classes before we put them in night school. So, what we do is, we kind, we do, we develop an individualized plan, regardless of them being in a special education program or not. And the individualized program plan is designed such a way that you pass all your daytime classes, we allow you to create one class in the evening, and then we use summer school. And that's the reason why, also, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, I reached, before, you know, we, we started dealing with this, I reached out to Ms. Queen at PCSB, and the board and I are having conversation about becoming a year-round school, in order to make sure we support the student in, you know, address the needs of our students. These are the few. Hold on one second.
And a follow-up question, given, given the trends that you're discussing with, in terms of students transferring out, enrollment declining, can you explain why some of these changes that you're talking about doing now were not initiated two years ago, three years ago, four years ago?
You know, you have to have deadline, baseline data in order to implement strategies. And what we do at WMSC is, you can implement one thing this year, it doesn't mean that will work next year, because kids are moving around DC. So, for the last two years, what we've been doing was collecting. Yes, two years ago, that's when we wanted to implement the, the evening classes, the twilight. However, the counselors and I, and the vice principal for 10th grade at that time, when we sat down and looked at the student transcript, look at their academic progress, we did not want to set them for failure. We cannot put you in the evening classes if you are not passing your daytime classes. That's the reason why. And then, what we did to make sure we prepared them is to start offering a double dose of English One for the ninth graders, double dose of English Two, Algebra One, and Geometry, to make sure that they have the appropriate skill in order to take additional classes.
And then, in addition to what Dr. Diagny has said, one of the other things that we've heard from the students is the location of the school. And that's why we've been looking for a building that has close proximity, or is close proximity to middle schools, where we can have a pool of freshmen coming in. Also, in relation to, why do we still stay here, or why were we still here? A move was always linked to the sale of the building. And we've been trying to sell this building for five years, at least, for five years. And we knew that the proceeds from the sale, we could use to help us move to a better location for our students.
Right. Can you discuss what some of the impediments to getting the building sold in previous years might have been?
Sure. We listed the building for a certain amount of money. We had some interest, but when people came in, and this was before all the development that was going on around here, they were looking at it as a storage facility. We had a couple of schools come through to look at the space, but it just didn't suit them because of the same problems that we were having, as far as being in close proximity to middle schools. And then, finally, when folks were coming through, they really weren't interested in the building, they were interested in the land, because of the development that you see around, and it was much less than what we were asking for.
And how long have you been in this building?
Since 2007?
2005, I believe, if I, 2005.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I just want to clarify, were you also going to make a presentation, or we can continue?
I believe I touched off what I was going to talk about. There is one thing I wanted to add. Another strategy we have in place to support students is to provide online classes for them. For example, we have three seniors who need only two classes. We provide online classes to them, but we realize that even with the online classes, we need to assign a teacher to support them, because rigorous, it's very rigorous for them. I just wanted to bring that up.
So, because we've talked so much about the need for a new building, I want to really focus on that with the numbers. So, looking at both the 200 student prediction and the 211, it looks like your 2018 forecast is $181,000, around there. I understand that Building Hope may work out, and there's an arrangement that could really benefit you, but I'd like to hear about, like, the worst-case scenario that allows you to do a six-month upfront deposit. Like, how, how does that work? When, because it sounds like you want a very attractive building, that's close to a metro and has a gym.
So, we recognize that as soon as we get the green light from you all, we need to start looking for a building that we can afford, thinking about six months out, being able to move in at the end of next year. As we said already, we will be working with Mitch Rich as a part of raising funds to be able to move. And that will start immediately after we get the green light from the charter board to move forward. Mitch Rich has agreed and is working, will work with us to identify sponsors, donors, all of that, to help us build the coffers that we need to build. In addition, while we're giving you a budget of, excuse me, an enrollment count of 200, 211, we really plan to do more. And I know, we have to watch that, being over optimistic, but we think that all the plans that we have in place, and the analysis that we've done on the available students that are interested, that we will make and exceed 211. So, that will also help us build coffers, so that that can help toward, and in keeping, of course, our spending in line.
So, just so I'm clear, the current projection that we have in front of us doesn't include a six-month upfront?
No, it does not. That is something that we will work on as soon as we get the green light.
Okay.
I have a question. Whoops, I'm sorry. Continue, Shava.
Okay, really quick question.
You first, Shava.
Really quick question, Steve. I just want to make sure, we have that you still owe a 5% retirement contribution to your staff, which equals about $145,000. Is that in the projection? It is?
Yes, so that's projected to take place in July. So, if you're looking at the, the weekly cash flow that's behind the summary, in the middle of July, that payment comes out.
Okay.
After the per people funding.
Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
So, I'm sorry if you already answered this question, but I didn't understand, I'm a little slow today, I don't think I understood your response. It seems to me that the financial viability of this school, in the, for the next year or so, depends on meeting enrollment targets. And I'm still not sure if I understand why enrollment at the school has dropped from 300 students. I'm not sure why you've lost 100 students, and I, and I feel like I need to understand that, because it is adding students to your school that's going to, to make you viable. So, I'm sorry to ask you to explain that again, but could you do that, please?
Sure, I think Dr. Diagny and I will both explain it. We polled students and families, and we found out, one of the reasons is that students want a high school experience. They want a gymnasium. They want the things probably that most of us came up with in high school to be offered at the school. And that's a deterrent when students look at our school. They, you know? The other thing is, the location of the school. We're on Bladensburg Road, and it's a heavy, you know, it's traffic going in and out of the city. There's no school campus here. And so, students want to, to be someplace in their, in their neighborhood. This is, we recognize the flaws of where our school is located. So, those are the two main reasons that, that we're leaving, and that the students are not coming here. And then, Dr. Diagny can talk about the students who come to the school late in their school career, 11th and 12th graders, and the fact that they want to graduate.
Yes, when we did the data analysis for the past two years, we realized that students will come to us with less credit. We require 27.5 credit to graduate. And when they turn in, or about turning 17 and 18 years old, and realize that chances are, I will not be able to graduate with my class, they will decide to go to Loximore or Phelps.
So, the facilities piece won't be fixed next year? And is it the case that there are more options for high school students in DC now? Because it wasn't so long ago that you had many more students. What, what changed in the landscape that caused that 100-person reduction? Are there, are there other places that have gymnasiums and campuses in more desirable areas? Is there more competition?
Yes, I think it's a combination of everything you just mentioned. There are more schools in DC, so therefore, more competition. And there are high school options that have gymnasiums, that have football fields, that we don't have right now to offer our students, but we would like to. And that is one thing that, if given the green light to move forward, that will be one of the first things that we're working on with Mitch Rich and others, to find an affordable school to go to, where we can have those options for our students.
Thank you.
If you did have to take out a loan next year to cover payroll or any expenses, which I think you have forecasted could happen, what assets would you be able to use to be collateral on that loan?
So, the one thing that I had mentioned is, Building Hope has initially agreed, you know, assuming that the school charter is in place and the $500,000 comes through, that there would be access to a line of credit, which would provide the school with some working capital, particularly right around the time of, if each per people payment, where just prior to, there's, there's a low point in the cash and some additional working capital is needed to, to make sure they get through that time.
In addition, we met recently with I C, the CFO's office, earlier this week, to find out the possibility of being able to assign a part of our allotments that come in, in July, October, January, and April, to see if we needed a loan from an outside entity, such as a bank. Could a part of the facilities allotment go straight to them as a guarantee that they will get their money? And I C CFO, Mr. Paris Saunders, not the CFO, he's a budget person within the CFO's...
No, he's the CFO.
Okay. Paris Saunders and, I forget the other person's name, who was a representative of the charter schools in the CFO's office, said that that is possible to do, that students at schools do that for a number of reasons, and, and have done in the past. So, that is another option for us, if we have to go that direction.
And to clarify, so the, the loan, if, if there was a line of credit drawn down, the expectation would be that out of the next per people funding payment, that loan would, the line of credit would be paid down?
So, I have a follow-up question to all the loan options that you're exploring. My assumption, can you hear me okay? My assumption was that the sale of this building could have been, or should have been, a primary opportunity to bring in some cash flow that would help you both pay down debts that are currently existing, and possibly set you up for the next school year. But when I look at the numbers that we're, we're provided with, the amount of the sale appears to be just enough to pay off the amount that was owed. Is that correct?
That is correct. What happened was a series of going back and forth. The original developer was going to help renovate a building for us, not far from here, and lease it back to us. And in that scenario, we would have gotten much more cash back to help with that piece, and it would clear our, the debt. That developer came back and told us that they had looked at the, what it would cost them to do that, and they said they could... this building. And then just, we would keep trying to connect with them. And in the meantime, when we were trying to connect, we also had other people come in to look at the building. And it just wound up that in the end, that was the low offer that we were given.
Okay, okay. And then with the $500,000 loan that you're exploring, getting now, there's no opportunity to get a higher amount? Because it sounds like everything I've heard from the sell of property that you've done to this potential loan just sort of sets you up to have to borrow even more money, whether it's from Building Hope or others down the road. So, that also, there was no opportunity to borrow a larger amount that could preclude having to borrow even more next year?
So, we didn't want to get further into debt. And we knew that in our calculations for the enrollment, we wanted to try to stay within that budget and that we would work very hard to raise the funds with this consulting firm, with our advisory council, so that we would not end up in this situation, as well as increase our enrollment numbers, going on the conservative numbers that we've provided in the budget, but always looking to have more than what's there. So, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make sure all the board members on the phone have had a chance to ask questions.
Rick Cruz texted me that he just, he's in a bad reception area, and he had a question that he wanted to ask, which is, how has the school staff responded so far this year to all of this uncertainty? Has, have you lost any staff this year so far? How would you characterize the morale of the staff?
So, I can't speak for the staff, but from coming here and observing, of course, the morale is low. That's natural, if you're thinking that you may not have job security next year. We do have staff members, faculty members, that will speak, and they can answer that directly, because I don't want to speak for them.
Just a few closing comments. Stephen Marcus, counsel for the school. You've heard about the school's history, 20 years, one of the first charter schools ever chartered in the district. The hundreds of students who graduated, many of whom went to college. I was told today that evidently the school has had 100% college acceptance rate, with all those kids being provided with full financing. The school made a mistake. They made a mistake. They were overly optimistic about their enrollment, and they did not make appropriate staff cuts. An understandable mistake, because it's very challenging to cut staff. But they're working extremely hard. This is a very, very dedicated board and a very, you can tell a very dedicated faculty, if they're prepared to defer payment of their salary in order to help the school survive. I've never seen that before. We appreciate Mr. Pearson's offer to postpone the vote from Monday to April 12th, but you've seen the letter which has been distributed by Industrial Bank, and they need seven to 10 days to do their due diligence, and if they want to go forward, to prepare the documentation. Under the School Reform Act, the board has 30 days from today to make its decision whether or not to revoke. That would be May 5th. The school is asking for two weeks. We're asking the board not vote on Thursday next week, but rather defer it to April 20th to give Industrial Bank an opportunity to do the diligence and see whether we can solve this problem, and also to provide staff at PCSP with the opportunity to really dig into the numbers that Lance has prepared. It's my understanding that students do not have to accept what schools they're going to go to through my schools, DC, until May 1st. And therefore, there's no prejudice to schools in terms, to students, excuse me, in terms of their options if you agree to defer the vote until April 20th. Given this school's history, given the importance of this decision, we ask the board to wait, to show a little patience, to wait for two weeks and see whether the school can get the loan, resolve the unanswered questions that staff has, and hopefully continue to survive. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? I think it is really commendable that your staff is willing to work without being paid. Is that something that they came to you with and took a vote? How did that come to fruition?
I think we, I think we should leave that to the staff to speak to, but I can tell you, when we first told the staff, which was March 5th, of what was going to happen that night, they volunteered, not all of them, but many of them volunteered to go without getting paid on March 23rd. We didn't ask them. We did not ask them to do that. And as a matter of fact, I said to them, I'm not asking you to do that. But they did. And I'm really proud of the faculty and staff here at WMST.
So, we're not going to hear from the witnesses that we've had sign up on our list. Because of time, we're only going to be able to hear testimony from witnesses that did sign up to testify in advance. As a reminder, each public witness has two minutes to speak. There's going to be a warning light that comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and a second bell will ring when your time is up. I again, please implore you to respect your fellow stakeholders and allow everyone there do two minutes, because we do have a set amount of time, 60 minutes for testifying. I'm now going to call the first five names. I'm going to kind of ask for a mix of parents, students, and faculty, just so that we're hearing from different voices. Please line up at the microphone as I call you. Sean Hall, Tanya Johnson, you can line up if you're here. Chamalo Bexley, Deanna Myers, Ebony Hardy. I'm going to get to five. Alberta Kozbert, Gregory Meredith, Paul Tinsley, Deja Owens, Deborah Brennan, Vivian Forrester, Lori Lincoln, Lena Shine, Sherri Rollins. Oh, okay, we got our five. That's Lena. All right. So, again, we'll start at two minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ebony Hardy, and I am the mother of twin daughters who have been with Washington Math and Science since ninth grade, and they are now in the 12th grade. I only have two minutes to talk, so I wrote my speech down so that I will not forget anything. First, I would like to thank the entire staff of WMST for all the support and love that you have given my daughters, given my girls for the last past four years. Both of my girls are in special education, and it has been hard for them at times to keep up with their classes. But the teachers here have continued to give them extra help and support by tutoring them after school to make it through. My girls also have emotional concerns, but the staff here has dealt with those issues too. And it was not always easy, and they know that. God, I know they know that. I want to say that the staff here at WMST has been more than educational staff. They're like family, because they understand some of the struggles that these students have in and out of school. The principal, Dr. Diagny, is very understanding and always supportive. The special education staff has helped with everything. Sometimes they just seems to know when families need a little more encouragement and help, and they are right to, and they are right to help. My girls receive counseling with their special education team and has all, and has helped them to mature also. The general educational team of teachers have stepped up to the plate and worked right along beside the educational team, and for that, I am truly, truly grateful. Dr. Diagny and her staff are to be commended for all the hard work that they do every day for our young people. So, finally, I just want to say thank you, and may God bless.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Diana. Good afternoon. My name is Diana Myers. I'm the parent of Malik Myers. I have a history of family members had attended Math and Science. Olivia Edmonds, she's still attending, she's in special ed. Nida Johnson graduated for 4.5. Brianna Dix went to Delaware State, made the dean list every year. Michael Myers went to college in Fairmont University in West Virginia, and now Malik Myers, been encouraged by most of his teachers to move him on to honor English, math, and interested now in the IB program next year. He also enrolled in UDC dual enrollment. Last semester at UDC, he took psychology this year semester, which he should be getting out now. He's taking finance for the help of Math and Science that pushed him, along with his parents pushing him. So, I love Math and Science. I would be sad if it's closed. It would be difficult for him to move on to a junior class, another college, I mean, another school next year. So, I would do whatever I need to do as a parent of Math and Science to help move the school on. I will be asking more cousins to attend the school. So, that's about it. I love Math and Science.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Paul Tinsley. I graduated from Math and Science in the class of 2016. I currently attend Garrett College, and this morning I came three hours away. That just gives you an idea of how much, that just gives you an idea of how much WMST means to me. Not only was this a school, this is like my family. Not only did I learn, I got an opportunity to go to Yellowstone National Park, free of charge through groundwork that was introduced to me through WMST. It shaped me to the person I am today. It wasn't an easy journey. I was kind of a hot hit when I first got here. However, their staff worked on me. I've matured so much. I also just wanted to touch on the issue of the building. Like, I was a varsity cheerleader my senior year, but we had to go all the way down Bladensburg Road to Merlin, just to cheer the basketball game. It is kind of hard, because not only do we want to be recognized for education, we want to compete with other high schools as far as sports. This is a great school, and I would be really sad. I'm sorry, my voice is shaky. I'm not about to cry. I'm just a little nervous. I'm not good with public speaking. But this is a great school, and before my two minutes of, I just would like to give a shout-out to the staff. Lena Shine for helping me with everything as far as the math. Sherri Rollins for English, she was a great English teacher. Vivian Forrester for technology, she's the reason I know how to use Microsoft Word. And I would like to give a very, very special shout-out to the council suite. Without them, I would not be in college. Lori Lincoln, Andrea Linder, they're great. They shoved college down my throat. I really didn't have a option. So, just please have in your heart to at least help find money. I've donated $50, that's all I had to give, because I also pay for school. Just try.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Brennan. I teach English here. I've taught here for 18 years. We all live in a city, we live in a city where black scores of students are 62 percentage points behind white scores. And the attempt to close this school while not racially motivated has a racial effect. We are the only open enrollment black school that offers AP, IB, Project Lead the Way, and we leave it up to the students to determine if they want to be in the programs. A lot of the kids at this school would never be in these programs at a different school. There are a lot of big corporate high schools in Washington DC now, but none of them have the intimacy that Washington Math Science has. Our students are exposed to success far beyond some of their skills, and I just want to say that our alumni are the proof of what goes on at this school. Our alumni are the heart and soul of Washington DC. And it was a math teacher who suggested at a staff meeting that we give up our salaries in order to keep the school afloat. I didn't hear any objection, and in fact, Dr. Diagny stood up and said, please don't agree to this unless you're capable of doing it. This is a school that is unlike any other school in the city. You should really consider this. I know we've had our financial problems, but you really should consider the merit of the school and what we do for underserved students. I believe it's very unique. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Vivian Forrester. I'm the STEM coordinator for Washington Math and Science. I have been with Washington Math and Science for nine years. Ms. Shine and I will present together, so we will take four minutes. That is okay.
I didn't hear it.
Ms. Shine and I will present together, so we'll take four minutes. Okay. So, I'm here to say WMST is a consistent voice for STEM education in northeast, what District of Columbia, the United States, and the world. And I will prove to you why we say that. As Mrs. Brennan said earlier, WMST is the only school in this area that offers IB, Project Lead the Way, advanced placement. In addition to that, we also do Air Force GROTC. We have a career, a career in technical education pathway, where we do a full-fledged course of computer science, web design, JavaScript, Python, and just to name a few. We also offer Avid, and of course, our Microsoft Office Specialist, where we're certifying over 50 students each year. These, for this year, just to give us some of how well WMST is actually doing in STEM. This year, we attended a citywide STEM fair. We were awarded six awards. Overall, in the senior division overall, WMST student was placed second, and Everett Reed, who I believe may be in the audience, if not Everett Reed. Everett Reed will be representing the District of Columbia as a delegate to the Intel ISF Science and Engineering Festival in Pittsburgh this May. For this year as well, we are, we had two state finalists in the Samsung software tomorrow STEAM competition, and we were the winner for DC, and we were featured on ABC Channel 7. This year, we had a student who was selected to represent DC again in the Congress of Future Science and Technology Leaders in June. We had two students who attended the National Youth Leadership Forum Engineering and Technology and Vision Program in Boston last year. Last year, we had the student who scored the highest in Microsoft certification and represented DC in Florida. In 2010, we were first place in East Abbe Mission. In 2012, we were fourth place nationally in Seaport Robotics Post-Aut boat competition. In 2013, we had students who were selected as a national winner also in the National Center for Women and Information Technology.
Again, my name is Lena Shine. I teach math at WMST, and I was one of the teacher who deferred for the payment and for the payroll. I'm very proud to be a part of WMST. And we want us to raise in STEM for the word five to eight, the community that we serve. So- So last year, uh, we had eight awards for DC State, uh, Citywide STEM Fair. Uh, we had, uh, students selected as one of the nine students from District of Columbia to participate in 2016 Tomodachi US Japan Youth Exchange Program. Uh, we have our student to represent the state of DC championship in Microsoft Office Specialist, Microsoft PowerPoint 2016. And he was selected to compete for US national championship last year at Florida Orlando. Last year, 2017, uh, we had the first robotics Chesapeake Northern Merlin Competition, and we had the Rookie Inspiration Award. Uh, 2017, US Congressional Art Competition, we had the first place Lincoln Memorial and Cherry Blossom. Uh, we had our student who was elected as a 2017 Horshor Algar National Scholar. And we have one of her students who is the top female basketball scorer in Washington
We also wanted to say WMST has been a STEM school of choice in a number of other areas. When the congressional committee was having their automation and innovation conference, they reached out to WMST to have us produce a 3D rubber for them, um, in 2016. The Congresswoman, um, recognized that by providing a congressional record statement to show commitment to STEM by the school. WMST was also featured at the STEM for Us Energy Technology and Education Festival this year. When the US Department of State and Meridian was hosting their international conference with women from across the world, WMST was required, was asked to help teach them how we do STEM in the United States. When the Embassy of Japan had their program and wanted to demonstrate their robots, they brought it here to WMST. When National Geographics wanted to do their program, they came to WMST to help us build their biogas project. And we were also a part of the World Smart IRX STEM Challenge where we had two teams. This is an international competition. WMST had two teams in the competition. One of the team became a finalist. So we are saying WMST is here to help close this STEM gap. We have the economic projection point to a need for approximately 1 million more STEM professionals in the United States. Despite our challenges, we are engaging, educating, and empowering students through STEAM. We're providing fundamental STEM skills, creativity, collaboration, computational and critical thinking skills. We continue to be a consistent voice for STEM in education. We're not just in the game, we're making it a huge one. What we need is support, not closure. Please do not let $500,000 stand in the way of the student, the success of hundreds of students.
Um, hi, my name is Lori Lincoln. Um, at the end of the 2014-15 school year, I had a hunch. Um, and I made a proposal to Dr. Diagny, who put it before our board, and they agreed and let me start, um, a Department of College and Career Services. I was correct about my hunch in that there needed to be somebody whose primary responsibility and duty was to mind the understood but overlooked other mission of this school, which was college access. The teacher's job is to be on the front line of making sure the students have the knowledge they need to gain admission to colleges. But you can't go to college without money. And that's where I came in with my DC cap advisor, Ms. Andrea Leonard. I want to speak to some of our successes now. That hunch, um, came in 2015 from our student, um, I see a sans who won $50,000 from McDonald's Educates. It's phenomenal. Maybe you saw her on TV. It's a lot of college stuff on TV. In 2016, um, we took a student who didn't even have a 3.0 GPA. He is now at Virginia State for free. This is what we were able to get from him. This past year, um, 2017, we had two students. Um, one who kept contacting us over the summer. Ms. Lincoln, I don't even remember applying for the scholarship I just won. And another who said, Ms. Lincoln, I'm tired of going to interviews. Let somebody else have this money. I have enough. These students, um, their aggregate, um, total, um, scholarship money, and I'm talking about money in their accounts at school. Um, one had $75,000 and the other had, uh, $50,000. I know you've seen things on TV where students say, oh, I have a million and a half dollars in scholarship money. Those numbers are so inflated and don't make any sense. Ask us about it after the meeting. But we're talking solid numbers in their pockets. One of them has $12,000 in her bank account at school. These are the successes we've had. Ms. Leonard and I have been horribly humble about what our students have been able to accomplish here. We're not going to do that anymore. This is a serious recruiting tool. I know we accuse parents of not being involved in their students' lives throughout high school until it comes to prom and graduation. But okay, that's fine this time because they are really, um, interested in what happens with college. And they knew that, know their students need money. We can help them with that. We help them with college access, and we definitely make sure they have the money. In the city, um, the FAFSA completion rate, I think, is 50%? Ms. Leonard? It's lower than ours. We have a 75% completion rate right now compared to the rest of the city. So anyway, thank you. You want to know how we're going to get more students? That is how we're going to get more students. We're going to stop being humble and talk about just how great we are at the end. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sherri Rollins. I am a former teacher from WMST. And I didn't, I suddenly regret not preparing a statement. But WMST is a very special school. And honestly, if I could afford it, I would teach here for free. You know, I ask my, I'm a case manager now, and I ask my clients this question. What would you do if a miracle would take place? What would you want to do? I literally would teach here or volunteer here if I could afford it. This school is special, and this school is worth saving. Every year that I was here, we consistently made gains in the test scores, um, in the reading. I only can speak to, I was here for nine years, and I went to another school when I left here. And I'm telling you, and I've been exposed to quite a few schools. There's no school like WMST. This school is worth saving. And again, if I had the money, it's not about ifs, but literally, if I had the money, I would give it all. Because this school is worth saving. I'm in touch with dozens and dozens of students who were formerly, uh, students here, and they're successful, they're thriving, they're preachers, they're teachers, they're doctors, they're lawyers. And it's because of WMST. Not just because of the academics, but the family. I heard a lot of the running theme of the family. One thing about WMST is that this is a very intimate school where we feel like we're going to just be connected for life. So again, I dropped everything to come here, even though I'm just a former teacher, but WMST is like a, uh, missing a limb if it were not here. And if more students knew about it, former students, they, there would be minds around, so many people didn't know about. But this school is special again because the teachers. Is that it? Am I?
That's it. Thank you.
Because of the teachers. And again, there's a common thread that we all have: love. Love brings us here together. The love that Dr. Diagny has, she disseminates that through to the staff and to the students. Another thing that we have is support.
Let's try to wrap it up. Thank you.
Save our school!
Thank you. Okay, um, in terms of the next five speakers, can we have Diamond Branch? Azrael Jennifer? Kelvin Davis? Martha Staggs Thomas? And Peter Camacho? And Lieutenant Colonel Clyde Henderson?
Again, two minutes, please.
My name is, oh, how are you doing? Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Diamond Branch. I graduated in 2009. This school means everything to me. The teachers that you've heard from, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Rollins, Dr. Diagny, before she was a principal, meant everything to me. Um, they've helped me get through some of my darkest days, um, because of the love that this school has for their students. Colonel, Chief is not here, but those two were like my rock in this school. Um, this school has seen me through a lot. I've accomplished a lot. I'm now an employee at NASA. Um, I went to Bowie State. I came here straight from work because I, this school just meant that much to me. I was dodging and dipping and diving in traffic to get here, but I made it here. Um, I got accepted into 13 colleges, um, because of these teachers, and they, and I keep saying it, but they have so much love for their students. It's unreal. I've never seen a high school, um, that pulls together like this. So save my school. Oh, also, um, I know, uh, I don't know, I don't remember her name, but another parent spoke and said that, you know, she has cousins and things that, that attend the school. And I had a cousin that graduated two, three years ago. He's doing great. He works for the DC government now. I have another cousin that's in school right now. She's in the ninth grade. She's doing great. She has a 3.5 GPA. So just save my school.
Good afternoon. My name is Azrael Jennifer. I graduated from WMST in 2006. Um, this school means everything to me. It was, it was a different environment back then. We had a different building. They have a lot more, um, I've seen the school grow. They have a lot more programs now. Um, they've always helped, uh, their students go to college. I myself went to Fayetteville State University, graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Geography. Um, while at Fayetteville State, I also did ROTC. Um, I was in an ROTC program here, uh, under Colonel-in-Chief. Being the only Air Force school in DC, um, it teaches you a lot, especially being at this school. Um, it actually teaches you a lot of life experiences because, uh, being the only Air Force ROTC school, you're looked down upon because you're not like the rest of the schools. But you're going to be like that in college and everywhere in life. And that's a life lesson that you really don't get and understand until you make it out there and you're in the real world on your own. And that's one thing that the students do get at this school. Um, I've always had support from Colonel, uh, Chief, Dr. Diagny. Uh, I mean, it just shows to see when children graduate from the school and always want to come back to say hi to their teachers, uh, show their teachers what they've learned or see how they can help anytime when their school needs help. I'm pretty sure it's a, it's a, you don't understand, uh, commitment from the students. There was a GoFundMe page just to help raise money for the school just from alumni. Uh, it's a lot of people that couldn't make it here today, but this school has done wonders for just underprivileged kids in the Washington DC area. Uh, we, we compete with the best of the best, and we produce the best citizens for the Washington DC area.
Good, good, good evening. I didn't know I was going to speak. I'm Martha Staggs Thomas. But around here, I'm grandma because I'll be 76 this year, and I just thank God every day for that. Until we had our great, uh, Ms. Ross, who works with special education as a coordinator now. I was the coordinator. I came here, uh, in 2007 when we were in the other building across from the Navy Yard. And, um, I agree with the students and the staff that spoken already about all the wonderful things. I heard Kelvin Davis's name mentioned. I'm not sure he's here. You hear Kelvin? He's not here. He called me about a half an hour ago. Kelvin, six years ago, graduated. When he was in the 10th grade, he won first prize with the science fair here at the school. Then he won first prize citywide. And, uh, he was able to go with his mom and the Jefferson of the Science Department, Dr. Ria, who is no longer with us. Um, they went down to the University of Texas, I think it was in Houston, and he, uh, presented his, uh, project along with 32 other countries. His project was a temporal, um, excuse me, a temperate biome versus a tropical biome. And he was able to go expenses paid, he and his mom and, uh, the Jefferson. Um, many, many, many others of our students. I'll mention one other student by name. Janetta Johnson was in our special education program, and many of you maybe remember her. Janetta kept you until she got the information. She went to my alma mater in Columbia, South Carolina, Benedict College. She graduated two years ago, and she has become licensed as a social worker, um, a couple, about a year ago now. Thank you very much. Save our school.
Well, good evening. I'm Colonel Henderson, the Senior Air Force JROTC Instructor here at WMST. I've been here since the school's inception, when it was a school within a school at Baloo High School. In that, let me give you a little bit of history. Our first cadet commander went off to the Air Force Academy. Her name was Shayla Canty. She's now a major, hopefully a lieutenant colonel select shortly, uh, in the Air Force commanding a squadron. Our president. Our present cadet commander, Everett Reed, is nominated to the Air Force Academy right now and has been invited to the academy, full expenses paid, uh, for a weekend of orientation. So we hope to see him there shortly. That's the kind of programs that we have had here at WMST. We are a talented, dedicated, and experienced group of teachers and staff striving to grow our students into world-class scholars. We work with the students that come to us. We teachers are primary stakeholders in the success of WMST. I anticipate full recovery from our fiscal crisis that we are presently experiencing. However, we teachers were caught off guard by the, uh, the looming crisis because we were not informed. Therefore, I propose that after we successfully negotiate this crisis, that the trustee board of WMST be reorganized to include teachers as a full voting representative to help guide our school around financial and student enrollment crises. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, and I would like to end it with a, a instrument that we've put together to help in our enrollment as we go from school to school and, and, uh, community center to community center. Would you show that for us now?
Hello, my name is Christopher Mitchell. I'm class of 2018.
My name is RJ Weller, and I'm class of 2019.
My name is Neeran Weller, and I'm class of 2019.
My name is Damian.
My name is Michael Johnston. I pass the 2021.
Cadet captain of the JROTC program.
I've been doing excellent in the IB, the Puma program because I'm a part of IB group, and I feel as though it's a good start to my career. And the teachers are very hands-on because there's limited amount of students.
Of WMST, I think of a place for hope and a great place for our education every company. Uh, great opportunities for students of any type from any place to, uh, get a good education.
Save WMST.
Help save our school donate.
Save WMST.
Save WMST. You can donate on our GoFundMe page.
Hey, thank you. Our next set of witnesses, Kelly White, Sarah Beard, Everett Reed, Diane Carson, and Dr. Stacy Tate.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Kelly White. I am an alumni of the class of 2015. I'm currently a junior at Howard University studying advertising and economics. From my very first days here at WMST, I didn't know what to expect. But soon after a couple of weeks passed, I knew that this was somewhere I wanted to be from talking to my peers and my teachers. WMST, sure, it has its rough spots from needing building, upgrade repairs, or maybe like the school lunches when I was here. But when your family, you tend to overlook the bad and you tend to focus on more of the good things. From the all-star teachers like Ms. Forster, who helped me learn how to design websites and operate 3D printers, to the long hours of studying IB math with Mr. A. O., and even Ms. Brennan, who allowed me to improve my writing so that I could succeed in college. And even like the laid-back moments with Mr. Krueg, talking about the stock market and how to improve my running time in cross-country. We all have that one family member who tends to fall down and needs a little bit of picking up. I'm here today to make the commitment to picking up my brother and being my brother's keeper. To me, WMST is family. And you don't leave family behind. These teachers are the catalyst for the next generation of great STEM professionals. And one thing that really actually astonished me here when I was a student was Mr. Wilson and his commitment to teaching kids how to make water filtration systems that will actually be used and they were fully sustainable, but the time is basically up. So, the school is wonderful. It produces excellence. So, don't allow that to just go out the window.
Hello, my name is Everett Reed. I'm a senior at WMST. I'm 17 years old. And I just came up here to really say that before I came to WMST, you know, I never thought I'd be where I am today. You know, I never thought I'd be in an international STEM fair competition. I never thought I'd be the group commander for an Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps program. I've never thought I'd receive this much support from the staff from a school that I thought was just a regular school. But no, as we said, is family. We don't let family go down. Even if the times are hard, you know, everybody has family troubles. But you always got to give them a hand sometimes. You know, everyone gets knocked down a little bit. But you got to reach out that hand. And that's what I'm here to do, you know? There's so many things that they helped me accomplish. I mean, it's a true STEM school, you know? I never thought I'd be making an ethanol distillation facility, you know? Working with a team in Ghana to create this wonderful thing that could help communities, underprivileged communities, even our own, you know? I never thought I'd be going to the Naval, the Air Force Academy to do, to hopefully attend the Air Force Academy and to have them pay for me to go down there and shadow a student and actually hopefully go there next year. I never anticipated to go to the Naval Academy to participate in an underwater robotics competition known as Sea Perch. You know, all these things were never anticipated. I mean, in middle school, I did an orange peel science project, you know? So, I mean, it's amazing the stuff this school helped me to accomplish. And I hope it does it for many, many students here to come.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Clayton. I am not Sarah Beard, but I will be reading her statement. She's not able to be here today. And while I have the floor, you've heard a lot about our alumni. I'd like for them to stand so you can see just how supportive they've been. And our most recent alumni are not here because they're in college. Okay, this is from Sarah Beard. She's not able to be here today. "My school is a family first. The school had my back more than my friends did. This school kept pushing me and pushing me to do incredible things. Most of my skills I have is because of this school. I'm about to get a diploma from this school. I am a leader because of this school. I can now write a full essay because of this school. I am now wiser because of this school. I am disappointed in hearing the sad news because all the things my school did for me. And once I become successful in my life, I will give back to this school. I just can't see it happen to our school because they have never given up on me. So, we will continue to push and fight for our school."
Good evening. My name is Diane Carson. And I actually hold the position of numeracy coach and testing coordinator. And having that position, I sort of occupy myself in the middle spot. I'm not an administrator nor my teacher, but I get to be liaison between the two. My discussion today will sort of reflect that. The commitment that you've heard so much about is so very true in that we decided on our own, not missioned or coerced in any kind of way to give up our paychecks. I've never, in the 36 years of education that I've had, seen that happen, as has been said before. And the reason for that is that this staff, this entire staff, is thoroughly committed to educating African-American, Latino minority students, ELL, and SPED. This is a place that has been said already that I've seen. I started out at Baloo, and I saw this school move from Baloo to WMST as a charter school. When it was at Baloo, they took the brightest and the best. And we saw people graduate from Yale and Harvard and all those things. And it was moved to a charter school. After many years of me working here, I saw that there was a difference. It still had the same mission. This was one of the first, not only charter schools, but STEM schools. It was popular before STEM became popular. But one of the things that this school does differently is no matter what skill set that a child has, whether they are considered ELL, whether they are SPED, whether they are average, whether they are the brightest, that this school, in its loving and talented and gifted staff, take that child to the next level where they're able to not only graduate, but be proficient. That's a special, special thing that no one has cast out. Every time we go through an evaluation, people say that this is a caring staff. Every time we go through an evaluation, they say that this is a supportive staff. This is a place, people, where not only it is about STEM, but it is about making a difference in STEM for minority children. Even our former president said that, that that's necessary. Going to Baloo, I saw Baloo change into a different kind of faculty. And many of the staff were responsible for teacher, for students' education. Many of those same children I saw stop coming to school because their teacher was no longer there. We don't want that to happen to our children. We don't want our children that feel the support that they come here when they can't go home. They come here when they have no other place to go. You see that they're here today. We don't want them to not have a place to stay, not be able to go to a STEM school, not be able to get IB project lead the way and all those other kind of things that you have said. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. And please consider those things. Thank you. Is it on? Okay. Good evening. My name is Dr. Stacy Tate. And I wrote out my statement. I was trying to figure out what to say, what would be meaningful, what would change everyone's mind. But I have been to too many meetings like this, hearing parents, teachers, students begging people like the board not to close the school down. So, I'll take another angle. I've sat here and listened in the meeting. And I hear you and I hear what your concerns are. And I'm asking you for that extension. We need that extension to help continue the work that you see. There is no question that our students are excellent people. These are my kids, my babies. And they know when I talk about them, I talk about them as if they are my own. Just to give you my background, I'm a literacy coach. I did undergraduate at University of Michigan Ann Arbor. And I got my English degree and secondary teaching certification. I did my master's at Oakland University, got a master's in leadership. And I did my PhD at Michigan State University in Ed Policy. And I've been working in academia and in schools for over 23 years. And I'm telling you right now, I've had my own difficulties. But I came here three years ago. And I'm talking about sacrifice because I believe in this school and I believe in the students. I live in Ocean City. I travel two hours back and forth for three days a week here because I believe in students and I believe that I was put in on this earth to make a difference in their lives. And I see the staff sacrifice. And I'm sacrificing beyond what any of you would absolutely believe in terms of, I know where this budget is and I know how much I'm not getting paid with my expertise and my degrees. So, I'm asking you to make that sacrifice and to give us our extension to at least get our ducks in the row and save this school like it needs to be saved. Thank you.
Our next set of witnesses, Ruth Kone. Kone, thank you. Tori Walker, Marshall Putney, Brandon Jackson, and Camila Wheeler, and Debbie Atkins. That'll be our last speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Kone, and I'm a senior here at WMST. I'm part of the IB program. I came here 2014. I came to the United States 2014. And I came here in ninth grade. My four years living here has been like so amazing because the teachers, they're so supportive to me. And it's like an inclusive community. Like, we live as a family. They've been helping me. When I was in ninth grade, I was so shy. I can't even talk to no one. They have really, really taught me how to be confident and how to be a leader and how to express yourself and your feeling. And now I got an opportunity to go to George Washington University for free. I can't believe it. I'm surprised. I just want to thank, just want to thank all the staff here. I want to thank Dr. Diagny for her hard work and patient and diligence for everything she has been doing in this place. And I'm so grateful for being here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marshall Putney. I have not prepared a speech, but I will just speak from the top of my head. I am the occupational therapist and the secondary transition planning specialist here. I am here part-time. And I am also junior faculty at Howard University. Dr. Diagny has allowed me to, she's entered into a partnership with Howard University where I bring 16 second-year graduate students here to work with our students on addressing their post-secondary transitioning skills. The students are so driven, both on both sides, from Howard as well as from WMST. They see, our WMST students see our Howard students as leaders, as a model, as a guide. And so, to merge the two together is just a great opportunity for students on both ends. It's a training opportunity for the graduate clinician students as well as a training opportunity for our WMST students to learn about post-high school life. The Howard students talk to them about campus living. They talk about living in an apartment, paying rent, starting, having a bank account, managing their money, the importance of managing their study schedule to stay abreast of their studies. It's just an amazing opportunity that Dr. Diagny has afforded us. This school, I've been here serving since 2007. It is an amazing school. I really don't have anything further to say, but just to save the school allows the time that we need to put everything in place because this will be a total and complete disservice to Washington DC to close this school.
My name, Tori Walker. I'm a 12th grader and also the SGA president. I've been going here for four years. I also played basketball for four years. I learned a lot and I grew a lot in this school. I really like it. I actually love it. I might be sad if it closed down. So, I think y'all should save the school. And that's it.
Good evening, everyone. For those who know, my name is Brandon Jackson. And I used to be, well, I'm a former employee, put it like that. My actual termination date was actually March 8th. I'm not here to talk about the negative. One thing I'm not going to do is use this time as a platform to talk about what unfairness has been done to me. However, I do want to speak about all of the things that these young people have shown through the time I was here. I was a cohort leader for ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. Sorry. I, I'm sorry, y'all. I'm not trying to get emotional. But today, to hear so much, this school has afforded not only young people, but have also afforded us as adults opportunities here as well. Going through the school here, I got my educational leadership degree here at Washington Math and Science from GW University. So, I thank the school for that as well. I would hate to see the school fall because of mismanagement and in a way, poor leadership. It's unfortunate. I do not want to see the school and our students suffer because of us as adults. I'm a Washingtonian. I have a very, how can I put it? Invested interest in our young people's growth. And when I do not feel that things are right, I'm going to speak on it. And at the end of the day, I hope that the charter board finds a way to keep the school open because it deserves it and the students deserve it more. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Camila Wheeler. And I have a first-year 11th grader here at WMST. And the main thing that I would like for you all to do is urge you to think of the students, not the school as a business, but think of the students. The reason why WMST is here is because of the students. The reason why you have a job on the charter board is because of the students. Without them, there's nothing. And when I say think of the students, think of the students that if you do, worst-case scenario, close this school. The students that have to go to Anacostia because there is no other place for them to go. The rising seniors that cannot get into the McKinley text or the school without walls because there is no more time for them. I need you to think of the students. I need you to think of the students. My child in particular is in the I B program. We can't go anyplace else as a rising senior. This school, this program is setting these kids up for success. My brother is a 1987 graduate of Baloo, math and science. I need my child to be a graduate of math and science and I need you and urge you to think of the children, not this business that we all deal in as in these charter schools. The students.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Debbie Atkins. I am a parent of an 11th grader here at W M S T. I hesitated about speaking today for fear that it might jeopardize my son's future. While I appreciate and am grateful to hear the positive responses and remarks that past alumni and parents have experienced, my experience has been quite different. I'm just being honest. I, there was, there are so many questions, I had to prepare a statement, but I can't ask, I can't make that statement now because of the new information that was presented here to you for the first time as it was to me. I had previously attended every parent, emergency parent meeting that we were given less than 24 hours notice of and middle-of-the-day meetings. I attended every one and I asked very many of the same questions you're asking plus more. I even suggested that in order to make sure that the trust is still, is instilled in our students as well as our parents, we need to let them know what the plan is moving forward. Give us timelines, clear definitions, and that was not prepared for us. It was promised as other things, but not prepared. My son, while does not have an I E P, does have a 504 plan. All year until March 1st of this year, his 504 plan went neglected. The information was given, albeit later, let's say October, before the second advisory ended. It was negated, it was neglected until March 1st of this year. Some teachers have, you know, tried to accommodate from this, from, from that time, but not all. It took months for me to get in contact with the head of school. Months. It was almost as if she was the whiz. You just couldn't get to her. And I'm saying this here openly because I made these statements before in front of the board and to, and my concerns were made and I was given the same thing you're given today, promises. The location of the school hasn't changed in 13 years, but now it's a concern. Three years ago, what changed in the curriculum that made the students not want to participate anymore? It's not as simple as you giving us more money. If we're misappropriating the funds, then if there's not a change in, in, in the staff and the seniority and the governing bodies, then there won't be a change and a positive outcome won't be reached. The reality is time has been of the essence, but every, every time a deadline has been presented, nothing has been changed. We get on our students about being on time and allowing just a little bit of leeway in order for them to finish what they need to do or being stern and not allowing that leeway. And then if we don't allow it, but we want people to accept it from us as adults, what kind of, what kind of guidance are we setting, what kind of examples are we setting for them? It hurts to be in a situation where it's put, the race card has been put out there. There have been situations in here where my student was racially profiled among a student full of, among a school full of African-American, young, black, upcoming men. It hurts. I'm very engaged in my child, in the, in the welfare of my child's education, as many parents are. I'm hurt, but I'm more sad because I do have an 11th grader and I don't know what's gonna happen next year, but I do know that, I'm not sure who they called, if they got answers from the people, if they only got, if they only said who they got answers from, but I'm not, my son will not be returning to the school next year under those circumstances and the request was to take him out beforehand, but I couldn't chance that.
Thank you. Thank you. All of the witnesses who signed up to speak tonight have now spoken. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. We've heard from students, parents, and community members, as well as the school leadership and staff. We're gonna take everything we heard tonight into consideration and our financial experts will carefully evaluate the school's presentation. We had a final vote scheduled for this on April 9th. However, based on what we heard tonight, we will need more time to assess the school's plan. As Mr. Pearson said, many of the documents that we need to evaluate were just given to us before the start of this hearing. So if my colleagues agree, we're going to postpone that meeting to a later date and we'll notify everyone of the date as soon as possible. For anyone who didn't get a chance to speak tonight, we're going to keep the record open until 6:30 PM on Monday, April 9th and we encourage you to submit written testimony. Thank you all again for being here tonight.